Eighteen, two thousand seventeen, to order. And I would ask that you stand for an invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this meeting. We ask you to guide us in making good decisions for our city and for our members. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes ma'am. President, we have Al Atkins, Dr. James Barr, Tim Stainback, Bernice Reeves-Brown, Dwayne May, and Terry Taylor.
We have a court. So. Our first action item on the agenda is approval of the November third, November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, meeting minutes. Did everyone get a chance to review them? Maria sent them out twice, I believe. All right, I'm entertaining motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Barr, a second by Al Atkins. And Mr. May will abstain since he was not at the last meeting. So, any discussion on the meeting, on the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. The motion passed. Okay. Do we have any old business?
No ma'am.
Okay. So, item six on the agenda is new business. And we have item A. Tell the public hearing to discuss and consider a request by Kevin Patel for a conditional use permit, hotel limited space in a light industrial zoning on a lot located at one nine zero one Center Point Lane and take any action necessary. So, we would ask staff to brief us, please.
This man, thank you. This property is wanting to be a limited hotel. If you'll remember back, maybe you do, maybe you don't. This is right next to Comfort Inn Suites, by the way, if you're right behind the Home Depot, if you'll take a glance there. That's where they're looking at putting it. Back in two thousand eleven, they wrote an ordinance here concerning full-service hotels. There was a criteria they had to meet. They had to have a full-service restaurant that was open to the public. It had to be at least a hundred rooms. Several different criterias. Then they had a limited-use hotel, which you could do under a conditional use permit. And that's what we're asking for here. This one will actually be eighty-one rooms. It won't have a restaurant, it's not required. It will have to meet all the other requirements, which are eight hundred square foot pool. They'll have to have enough meeting room for fifty-five square foot per room, which they do have on their planes. We sent out eight letters. As you can see, these are big properties around it. We got one letter back that was opposed to it, actually from the next-door neighbor. I get that. And we also got a, we got a letter from them that had concerns about, actually, you can bring another hotel to Greenville this time. They didn't think that Greenville could support another hotel right now. I don't know about that. That's, I guess, whoever building this surely did their due diligence and know about that. But that's not really our concern here tonight, whether, you know, what it does for that. Seems pretty straightforward. I did not, I didn't have a smaller when I sent you a site plan of what it would look like, basically even looking at that. Oh yeah, I did send you one, thank you. That's basically what it would look like. But it does require a conditional use permit to be a limited use, and that's what he's asking for here, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any more questions, please?
Did you say, you said like the site of the meeting room, that sort of stuff? Was that what comes for limited use or the requirement?
For both. Both of them have that requirement. The fifty-five square foot per room is required, whether you're full service or limited service.
So, the deviation from full service then is this restaurant?
And the number of rooms that you can have. If you're full service, you have to have at least a hundred rooms. This one would only have eighty-one.
How does anyone stack up the rest of the hotel, like here, the one next door at the same time?
I don't have any idea. I don't look at it from that criteria. I don't know, very few of them have a full service restaurant. I'm talking that the public can come in and have a full kitchen, a real commercial kitchen. I don't, there might be one or two that do.
And there was only one letter that was against it, and that was from the...
That was an over next door. Yeah, I get that. Yeah, he had concerns about, he just didn't feel like Greenville could support that at the time, because I don't know how that business operator works. But there again, that's not really, you know, of what we do here.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you, sir.
We would now open a public hearing and ask the applicants to come forth. Please. We're at the applicant now. Is the applicant here? Okay. Then we are asking if there is anyone in favor of this that would like to come forth and speak. Okay, saying none. Anyone in opposition is allowed to come forth. Please state your name and your address. Come to the mic, please. We have a sign-in sheet up there.
Yeah.
Please sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christian Smith. My home address is Eight Meadow Lane, Greenville, Texas, seven five four two. Dear commission members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today on discussion of a new hotel in Greenville. I have worked in the hospitality industry for ten years, and all that time has been spent in this Greenville market. I have had the fortunate opportunity to work as a general manager at two of the highest performing properties here in this market. The Best Western Plus Montecorial Inn and Suites and the Holiday and Express Hotel and Suites. I have found that the supply of this market rarely, if ever, is exceeded by the demand. On average, over the course of a year, this market consumes only sixty to sixty-five percent of its total capacity in hotel rooms. Introducing more than a twenty-five percent increase in supply to our mid-scale limited-service market by approving a new hotel would only achieve the effect of an increase in the supply that is already greatly underutilized. Local developments, such as L3 moving more of its assets to the Rockwall area, have had a net negative impact on the room night consumption in this market. Rates have also become more and more competitive between the existing properties to incentivize an already stagnated demand. This type of construction would not incentivize business development in our market, such as a large-scale conference center would, and would not bring a new dynamic to our local market in the same way that a water park or a music venue, such as the Texan Theater, does. This development, if approved, would only use up more of our valuable commercial space along the I-30 corridor and blow to saturated markets even further. Our existing properties already feel the economic strain of maintaining brand standards, as well as staying fresh and modern for our customer bases year to year. Introducing more supply would increase the financial strain immeasurably on the established hotels, leading to a potential closing of existing businesses with property lots that are difficult to redevelop and a loss of hotel occupancy taxes provided by longstanding businesses. Our companies have already seen the dangers of what an oversaturated market can do in places such as Texarkana, where a high supply and an underdeveloped demand has seen local rates deteriorate and businesses closed over the last couple of years due to poor performance and smaller and smaller returns. My family and I have lived in this city our entire lives, and I want to see nothing but increased prosperity for its citizens in a long-term and sustainable way. Thank you again for allowing me the time to address my concerns with you, and I hope that you will take these factors into consideration as you decide whether to approve the development of another hotel.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I failed to announce that public comments are limited to three minutes, so.
I hope I got close there.
Thank you for staying within that. If there's someone else that would like to speak in opposition, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address for the records.
I am one of the owners at Comfort Suite next door, Kevin Patel trying to...
Please sign in, give your name and address, please, sir.
I am Megan By, I'm one of the owners next door, Comfort Suites. Kevin Patel trying to open next door, the hotel...
What's your address, sir?
Two thousand five Center Point Lane. So, I'm one of the owners of Comfort Suite, two thousand five Center Point. We opened in two thousand eleven. Looks like Greenville City is not ready for the new hotel. It's not that we don't want the hotel, but it looks like after six, seven years, I'm sure we are still struggling. Only last year, we had a good year that we were able to pay the property tax. All of the years, we had to borrow the property tax to pay for proper tax lending. We are running under fifty, fifty-five percent occupiers, under sixty percent. So, if any hotel running under sixty percent is not healthy, so it's not that we don't want the new hotel. It's just like we are under the water still after six years. We invested one and a half million dollars, still we can get another single dollar return of one and a half million dollars that we invested there. So, it's unfortunate that the new guy want to come. He can probably afford, but it won't be good for nobody. It's just like there's not enough food for everybody to survive and prosper. Maybe after three, five years, maybe five years after Greenville, we're ready, we don't mind having other hotels. And that's the reason I really oppose completely. It's something will be devastating, not only for me, but for the other three hotels that in Greenville. You want the city of Greenville to prosper, maybe one day we'll be ready, but not at this stage. So, I really appreciate if city will want to approve a new hotel at this stage. We need something that, more thing that develop for the city of Greenville, something hotel that will be impacted the owners of the city. So, there's nothing I can say more. I appreciate if, it's something that want be approved at this stage. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in opposition that would like to speak? Anyone else in opposition? Okay, saying none, I now close the public hearing and ask the commissioners for discussion, motion. What do you guys think?
Steve, are you expecting Mr. Patel tonight?
Yeah, I'll send him a clear.
So, Steve, we haven't had any applicants for a full service?
Would this hotel, would this property accommodate a full service if he wanted to put it on there?
Oh yeah.
So, he wouldn't lose his opportunity, right?
He could do that as a matter of right.
I mean, but he could, I mean, it's not too small for a full service.
No.
I don't know if the full service would have changed the occupancy situation that the two others are speaking about, though.
I don't think that's our concern as a board. As far as competition, competitions out there.
The city council will...
This man, it looks to me like he shared with us some confidential information about the marketplace.
Any others?
I make motion, they would accept the request for the, for the conditional use permit.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. May and a second by Dr. Barr. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have two, three. Two, three, four, and three against. So, the motion is tied there.
Four, no, we've got four, three.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. We have three in opposition. Okay, so, four, four, three. So, the motion passed. Four, two, three. We have seven here. So, four, three. Okay, that brings us to item B, if you guys, we got this through email, an addendum to planning and zoning. We now have a public hearing for the purpose of an ordinance of the city of Greenville, Texas imposing a moratorium on building alterations in the central area zoning district, including applications and plans for development for permits, plaques, verifications, rezonings, site plans, and new or revised certificates of occupancy. Adopting written findings justifying the moratorium, providing for waivers and limited exceptions to the moratorium, providing a severability clause, establishing an expiration date, and providing an effective date thereof. And please be advised that planning and zoning will not, this is not an action item for planning and zoning, this is just an open, a public hearing. And the city council will meet following this, upon adjournment of this meeting.
All right, I'm Daniel, I'm the city attorney. I'm here to go over the background of this item and legal issues that relate to this item. And then, as Bernice said, there needs to be a public hearing, which is a statutorily required item. There does not need to be a vote with this group. However, the city council will meet after this and will vote on their second reading of the sign. So, about eight or nine months ago, I started meeting with the, one of the committees on the city council, the appearances committee. And we had been talking for quite some time about putting together a historic ordinance, historic commission ordinance. And this moratorium directly relates to that. Overall, in a very quick nutshell, the moratorium, if it passes by the council tonight, or passes through a council vote, then for ninety days, there won't be any alterations of buildings allowed in the central zoning area, which is mostly on Washington and Lee Streets downtown. However, there is a waiver procedure built in, and people that want to do something in that ninety-day period can file for a waiver. That is required to go before the city council. That's part of the statute. We had come to a pretty good version of the historical commission ordinance that is almost identical to one that is online through the state government. Now, there's a Texas Historical Commission. They have promulgated some forms that cities that are situated like Greenville, home role city, can adopt. And if the council does follow through on a historical commission ordinance, I wanted to tell you very quickly what that actually means for the city, because it does involve this body. There are about eight steps that need to be completed in between where we are today with our regulations and where we could be at the end of the process of a historical ordinance, or historical commission in place. If the council adopts or approves the ordinance tonight on the moratorium, then it has basically ninety days to work within to enact that historical commission where nothing can be done down, well, in the central zoning area during that period. If they get to the end of that period and they don't have that item in place, then the council can vote to extend it one time to ninety additional days. So, the maximum amount of time that this moratorium will last is a hundred and eighty days. But initially, it will last ninety, if that's what the council votes to do tonight. Once that's in place, there will be a group of council members looking at the historical commission and also other ways to affect downtown development through either regulations or some other incentive type of program. If that happens, and if we move forward with the historical commission, the steps that are going to have to be followed are, number one, that the council would meet at the regular session when they're going to adopt it, they would adopt it, that put the ordinance into place. The ordinance also, as part of that process, will create a historical commission. Then the council's going to have to come back and appoint the members to that commission. Then that commission's going to have to sit down and adopt, make two, two findings, basically, or adopt two different documents. One is the map of the area that they're going to regulate, which can be the central area or it can be other, just parts of downtown. That would be up to the historical commission to make that recommendation. They would also adopt a design manual, and the Texas Historical Commission already has a design manual set up that can be adopted wholesale. It comes from federal regulations related to historic buildings. Or they can change that to fit the requirements of downtown. Obviously, some of our buildings here are not old buildings, and so it doesn't make as much sense, or it doesn't make sense really at all to regulate them in the same way as a hundred and fifty-year-old building. And so, those two things, both the area and the type of regulation, will then come back before this board. You guys will make a recommendation to the city council. The city council ultimately will either adopt it or reject it on both of those items. So, that's what it's going to take to get us to the point where we have historic commission. There's other things that could certainly also be considered in this time period, like the other, either regulations or incentive programs that we talked about. What's required for a moratorium is very different. Moratorium under Texas law only applies in certain situations. Two situations, really, that are defined by statute. One of these applies to this situation. It's under government, local government code, section two twelve. There's a subchapter E, moratorium on property development in certain circumstances. This is the statute that are, that the moratorium that's before this committee tonight and will be in front of the city council later tonight follows. The moratorium notice and publication requirements, which are in local government code two twelve point one thirty-four, basically say that if a municipality has a zoning commission, that there are very specific publication requirements and timing requirements between different public meetings. Because of the timing of the publication of the notice and moratorium in the newspaper, the city council had to meet for their first reading last week, and then the very last day that they could consider this for their second reading is, I believe, this Sunday. In between those two meetings, we had to have a public meeting, or a public hearing, I'm sorry, here in P&amp;Z to discuss it. That's why we're having this today. So, that's basically the ins and outs of the moratorium requirements. There is a section, I don't know if any of you actually got a chance to read through the ordinance itself, but there is a section that allows for anyone who has a project that is going to require the alteration of a building to file that with the city as a request for a waiver, and then that comes before the council. So, I can answer legal questions that you have about this process before you open the public hearing.
Someone in the courtroom. If someone's already starting to make changes and just, find a grandfather name?
Yes. If there's, if they have some sort of project and it's already underway, those, they're specifically exempted from the moratorium.
What about interior stuff?
This counts for interior as well.
You know, like water heaters, I mean, if you replace, I don't know, some of those things, I mean, even replacing a water heater, don't they require city permits?
I believe so.
That's a safety issue, though.
Yeah. Health and safety issues are going to trump all of this. If there's, especially for gas plumbing and things like that, this is not going to get in the way of people making health and safety changes.
What about signs, the moratorium signs?
Yes, definitely.
If the moratorium's put in place, Daniel, will the existing regulations that are restrictions that are in place with the C, the central zoning area now, and their design guidelines be incorporated and, or reviewed and incorporated in any new project?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, any new projects, I think that there's, at least based on the people I've talked to in the council, there's a desire for a complete overhaul to make sure that everything downtown is, number one, business and developer friendly, and that we maintain the historical character of the town. I think one of the issues, a couple of the issues, is that we, it's become very clear, we don't have any rules that prevent people from, if somebody wanted to paint something racist on the outside of a building or obscene. There are obscenity rules, but the question then becomes, what is obscene? Because there is no definition. In fact, numerous times, the Supreme Court has considered that issue. They basically always come back to the same line or set of lines that we know it when we see it. But there's not a list of items that, you know, this is obscene and this is not obscene. And so, right now, and there's nothing related to racial images on the outside of a building. We literally have nothing in our regulatory abilities to keep people from doing something like that or to force them to take it down.
The reason I ask is when I was reviewing for tonight's meeting, I was rather surprised at the extensive amount of restrictions that are already in place in the settlement to get the three hundred and six if only, and the accompanying the design deviation or guidelines.
Sure.
And if they were merged to a historic commission, would we have to adopt the wholesale historic commission manual or...
No.
We could tailor one for the city of Greenville.
That's exactly right. In fact, I talked with the, at the Texas Historical Commission, there's two full-time staffers in their program that relates to certified, or cities that become certified once they adopt that program. And they have a listing on their webpage of all the cities in Texas that are part of that program. There's seventy-three that are certified. There's many more that have historical commissions that just haven't gotten certified. And that's, that's a difference of, basically, being able to go after federal dollars for downtown renovation projects. But I asked them about, you know, what type of things could be certified and can the city, if it adopts, if our historical commission recommends, and then P&amp;Z adopts, and then the city council adopts, a design manual that does have material alterations from the federal design manual, is that going to be a problem? And it's not, as long as it meets, you know, the general requirements of having a historical commission. It's a statutory animal, and so there's certain things that we must do, and there's certain things we may not do. And in the middle, there's definitely some wiggle room when it comes to local regulation. Yes ma'am?
Are there any applications, I just missed more of a Steve question, are there any applications out there that if the moratorium was passed that would be effective that sit in this limbo state?
The answer to that is definitely no, because if the application's already on file,
then it's grandfathered.
Okay. So, just even the application?
That's correct.
I wonder, are there any other contracts to purchase those buildings under the subdivision, or not knowing about this? You know what I'm... You know what I'm saying, is anybody expecting to buy a building and down there and not, maybe doesn't want this?
Possibly. I'm not sure. I haven't heard of a contract for the purchase of a building that this could potentially get in the way of, but that certainly could be an issue that exists.
One last question. If you recall back September 26th, the council, in an application for a state grant, declared the central area as blighted. And by definition, of course, that's an area subject to neglect or badly damaged or deteriorated. Will this moratorium, if it takes place, have any effect on that application for grant money or federal funds?
No. It won't have any effect on that at all. That's, what you're talking about is, I understand the reason that you're asking the question, and there are grants.
You had brought the federal funds and state funds.
That's right.
We've declared it blighted, I don't know any drawbacks we're putting or additional grants that could be available.
No, that, those two are totally separate animals. And I understand what you're asking, though, is about, you know, if the city makes statements, then those can be problematic later on, potentially. And that's something certainly we deal with at the airport with our federal grant assurances. And, you know, it's incumbent on the government and its staff to make sure that we all have the same story every time. And there's nothing about that story that's going to have a negative effect on this, but in general, there is, there is blight, and that's literally the whole purpose of this procedure.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Then we will now hold a public hearing to discuss the partners with the city of Greenville imposing a moratorium. Anyone who wishes to speak for?
Is invited to please step forward. Please be advised that public comment is going to be limited to three minutes, because I have a feeling there's going to be a lot. So anyone who wishes to speak for, please come forward. Please sign in, state your name, and give your address, please.
My name is Jerry Ranson, 1702 Bethel Road, Greenville, Texas.
And I am here tonight as chairman of the Parents Committee. We, like you, we face a lot of, most of the issue, well, everything we focus on is parents-related, like you, I suppose, most of the issues are you involved, are parents-related. I'm also the person that's being demonized on Facebook right now for bringing this forward to the council. I want to give you a little background, how we got into this area. I think probably, as Daniel said, over a year ago, the Parents Committee began looking at this issue with concern that somebody, a road painter or somebody, could come and paint something obscene on a building. At that time, I don't think Ms. Moran owned the building across from the GMA, but I don't know the way our culture is. I don't know if you've seen images from the Women's March in Washington where people dressed like, in costumes, like body parts, and I'll leave the rest of that image to you. But we became concerned about what might happen, what the city could do if that happened. And in fact, there's absolutely nothing we could do. And so that was what began the discussion with regard to some kind of control. Many cities have some kind of controls, rules or whatever about what goes on town, on downtown in their, in their central district business. And Daniel brought this forward to us, the historical commission, which is a way to protect historic buildings in all of the downtown area. And I think it's absolutely necessary. Mr. Evans is here, if he'd like to add anything to our, our discussions regarding this issue, but I think it's something you should consider. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for this issue?
Brian Morgan, 2 Knob Hill, Greenville, Texas. I actually only have one question. I'm building a new building on Washington and King, and it's about two weeks ready for me to go in. So it might be here that if this comes down to no sign, I won't be able to put a sign up?
Washington. You already got a permit?
It's almost finished built, as far as, as far as the sign goes.
I don't know if it'll go that far. I don't believe it would go that far down.
Yeah, the project is still in progress.
So it's not going to have any problems?
And you're not actually in the central area, it's, it ends at the grocery store.
Oh, thanks?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for this issue before us? Anyone else wishing to speak for the issue? Okay. Then I would now ask anyone wishing to speak in opposition to please step forward, state your name and address, sign in, and remember, three minutes.
Commissioner Brown, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm James Satterwhite, and I live at 3819 Stonewall Street.
In the blue house.
My fam-
Let's reset that.
Thank you. My family hucks out Southern Cash taxes in the 1920s, but the house wasn't blue. But it was, cotton was king then. But I grew up in Greenville, and my dad had a general store and filling station, and it's located where the Enterprise car rental is now. Our home is where the Jack-in-the-Box Restaurant is now. And many times during the late 1950s, I've heard my uncles discussing Greenville. The marks were, "The mayor and a city council are going to nickel and dime us to death with these parking meters." Boy, I didn't even know what a parking meter was back then. We're fast forwarding to the 1960s, and downtown Greenville was a happening place. I don't have to tell anybody here what was like to cruise Lee and Washington Street and then buzz on down to the Royal Drive Inn. In the mid-1970s, I came back from Turkey. I was a member of the U.S. Air Force then. And there was a new business that came in. I didn't see them in Greenville right away, but in Kentucky, it was called Walmart. And I looked at the cheap goods in Walmart then and says, "It'd never go." Boy, was I wrong. Anyway, I remained away from Greenville for 33 years. I visited in mid-1990s, and there was not much left of the historic downtown Greenville, except a major highway known as US 380 and Spur 302. All the citizens were moving down to the interstate, rolling hills. I came back here in 2001. Friends, there was times I could ride my bicycle on Lee and Washington after 5:30 in the afternoon and never see another car or truck. Then something magic happened. Buildings started to be renovated, and now our city council appears to want to return to those depressing days of the late 80s. I am asking the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission to vote no and not impose a moratorium on altering buildings in the so-called Central Area Zoning District. Property owners do not need another layer of bureaucracy when we have permit processes in place, a planning and zoning commission, and guidelines and regulations on the book. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Please sign in, state your name and address for the records.
Hi there, I'm Derek Price, 808 Sahara Drive. And first of all, thank you for your public service. I know serving on P&amp;Z takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of time away from your families, so thank you for serving and helping to make good decisions for our community. I would like to encourage you all, whether or not this moratorium passes, to please take some time to carefully look at the way other cities handle public artwork, and to follow the examples from some of the most successful places around here. Look for best practices. I've been surprised at the number of people in Greenville who have the misperception that other cities handle public artwork through a government committee that votes on what art is appropriate to be in public and what art is not appropriate. Not only is this a gross misperception of how the process works in other towns, as you all probably know, but it's an idea that every American should find offensive. Art is the ultimate form of speech, and it should not be subject to government approval before it's spoken. That raises some very basic First Amendment issues. Now, also, as you probably know, other cities can and do regulate the appearance of their town using historic districts and design standards districts, but they also take careful steps not to overreach. The very best models use measurable standards, kind of like the same things P&amp;Z looks at all the time. Does it have enough parking spaces? Does it have big enough setbacks? Things like that. All those are objective, measurable things. And you can apply the same types of standards to artwork. Does it cover more than 60% of a wall? Is a sculpture more than five feet tall? These are all measurable things. And they might be part of a downtown plan going forward. If the standards are not clear and very well-planned from the outset, the process can evolve into one of arbitrary opinions. I like that art, or I don't like that art. And that kind of argument is what the most successful cities try to avoid. Either the artwork meets the standard, or it doesn't, and there's no arbitrary opinion-based judgment call about whether you like it or not. Now, figuring out that process takes a lot of time. Fortunately, we do not have to reinvent the wheel in Greenville. I'd encourage you to please look at what other cities are doing and how they handle that process, and especially the ways they find to support their artistic community. We can learn from what other communities around us do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the records.
My name is Barbara Moran, and the relevant address is 2712 Lee Street, better known as the Texan, Texan Theater, but also I have the Old Beckham Hotel. And I didn't buy into historic district for a very specific reason. People asked me about the Texan Theater when I bought it. Are you going to make it historic? And I said, "I don't want to jump through the hoops of, can I put another brick in the wall and have all of those requirements of historic district?" It's a historic building, you have to do certain things and have to get certain permissions to change anything. And I didn't go that route for that reason. Our downtown is old, but there's very few buildings that aren't already designated as historic. They have historic markers on them that are historic, actually have a history that we want to protect. There's a lot of history that we would like to forget in our town, and I'm trying to help get past that. You've probably seen the big artwork that I plan to put across the street that I understand is grandfathered, and I'm excited about that. I think it's going to draw people to town. We have gotten a bit of synergy going that I think the moratorium will stop. There is excitement about downtown. There were a lot of people downtown for the parade. It was, it was exciting to see the number of people on all the streets, on Washington Street, on Lee Street, somebody who was in the parade, I could only see, I was at the Texan, if you've seen those pictures I posted. They were in the parade, and they said the entire parade route had a lot of people. And so I don't think that regulating the outsides of our buildings for the reasons that I heard, obscene, yes, I would ask you to trust the owners. I'm not going to put something on my building that's going to keep people from coming downtown. And I don't think anybody else who is investing millions in this downtown is going to do that. There's a bit of trust that has to go on. If they get graffiti, either the business owner or the city can paint over graffiti. We can, I mean, that'll cost us something, but I think the much larger cost that a historic designation for downtown, I think that would cost the city a lot more and lose the energy, and fewer people would be coming downtown. And somebody asked if I'd mentioned this. We do have rules about downtown and how things were supposed to be, and our front doors are supposed to be on the street, and when the city built the police station, they didn't even follow the regulations. So it's a bit offensive that now we want to impose it on everybody else when it wasn't followed to begin with. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak? I will now close the public hearing, and we will-
We'll move on to the city's parade.
Uh, you may.
Yes, what is the boundary for the central area zoning district?
Well, I don't have a map in front of me, I don't think. I can tell you, it ends up, go ahead, see.
It's basically run from King Street back to east. It encompasses Washington and Lee Street, and it goes down to roughly around Farmers Market.
We don't have a good map here.
It doesn't include on the other side of Farmers Market, whatever that street is to the east. Yeah, it doesn't include anything on the other side of the.
So Gordon is the, the, Gordon, is Gordon in the?
The market. Market Square.
Where it gets Market Square.
It's the Market Square.
Down to Bodark, the next one. Yeah, stop.
Yeah, it stops in the middle of Bodark.
Oh, okay.
So it only encompasses any of the streets, this, like, if Washington Street to Washington and Lee.
Yeah, it's Washington and Lee, and then a block on either side, and then it goes east and west, down to the grocery store, and down to Bodark.
So it doesn't include Johnson Street?
It includes part of, yeah.
Parts.
Yes, sir.
It, it goes to right. Would it go to right, sir?
No, no.
Okay, to King.
Yeah.
To King, that's right.
Oh, okay.
I almost said a choke.
That was chosen on this body years and years ago. Yeah.
I think originally that came about, they used to call them fire districts. Most of your downtowns had a fire district. And, and they had a certain way that things had to be built, so because you had so many people packed in there, and that's how they, there was a way you built back then, and they used to, you used to call it fire district, and then somewhere over a period of time, a lot of cities changed that to the central area, and then it got encompassed with the zon zon and such as that.
What, what are we supposed to do now? Were we supposed to approve something?
No, at the end of the public hearing, that's the extent of your obligations for this.
We're actually back to our agenda.
Yeah, we're back to our.
So we are at item number seven, so I have updates.
I don't have anything.
And item number eight, adjournment. Do you have a motion? You have a motion, and is that all those in favor? Motion hearing.